Attention please. It's so nice to see all of you here. I don't have my gavel that I usually have at the planning board meeting, but this is an official, it's not an official planning board meeting. This is an informational meeting that we've invited you to attend to express your opinion. When the first letter went out about our public meeting, it didn't include the park residents. So we felt that they needed to have a chance to say what they thought, and that'll help us make our decisions. So what I'm gonna ask, we're gonna have a presentation, and then people can get up one at a time to speak. We're always respectful and kind, so be sure that you remember that. And everyone will get a chance to speak. So don't get upset if you think you haven't been heard. Before we go home, you'll all be heard, okay? So we're gonna start this out with a presentation by Glenn Thornton and Jeff Cook, and they'll explain who they are and what they're doing. It looks like Glenn's gonna do it.
I will start. I'm gonna move this first of all, so everybody can see it, hopefully.
That helps us, we can see. Can everybody see okay? This is a good room to have this in. This is a fire training classroom. It's better than just in the town hall.
Can everybody see it?
No, we can't see very much right now.
Oops.
Now you can't see it.
That's what we see.
I can.
You can turn it a little more.
How about if I stand in front of it and make it fair for everybody?
If some of you wanna come over here, you can. Okay, go ahead.
It's about the best I can. My name is Glenn Thornton with Thornton Engineering. We're the engineers for Cook Properties, the owners and developers of Country Meadows Manufactured Home Community. I'm sure most of you are familiar with this, but for those who aren't, the existing community consists of 75 acres of land on Clinton Street Road. What you see in blue, light blue, is the developed portion of the manufactured home community. The dark blue is the 30-acre development area, where we're proposing to add 75 new mobile home lots up in this area. This is a more detailed plan of that dark blue area. The 30-acre area shows what we're proposing to do. And basically, what you see here in dark brown are the existing homes that are up there now. The light gray are the existing roads. And what we're proposing in the dark gray are the new roads, loop system on all the roads. And the orange here are the individual lots. So this is a lot, this is another lot, but if you add them up, there'll be 75 lots.
Is that up off of Briarwood Terrace?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Briarwood Terrace is right here. Here's Old Metal Lane, College View Drive, out to Clinton Street Road. 75 lots. The density within this 30-acre development parcel will be 2.4, 2.5 homes per acre. And the existing, well, when all is said and done, the 178 existing homes and the 75 new homes will result in about 3.4 homes per acre. Town zoning doesn't really have a restriction on the number of lots per acre, but if you look at the minimum lot size, required width of roads, recreation areas, it comes out to be about five lots per acre would be allowed by town code. And we're proposing about half that amount, about half the density, as would be allowed. The existing area is vegetated right now. There is a town sanitary sewer easement through the parcel that really restricts what we can do in that area for development, planting, anything. So we're trying to avoid this area. And we're developing these areas with stormwater management areas, the new streets, the lots. We're trying to leave as much vegetation as possible. I mean, tree clearing is expensive. There's no reason for us to clear a lot of the vegetation. So most of the interior vegetation will be left. We're also proposing to leave vegetation around the perimeter. We had a meeting back in June of last year, and probably a lot of you attended, and there was a lot of concern about the visual impacts over on Stringham Drive. So what we've added are, is a staggered row of evergreen trees. They're five foot tall. And when they're being planted, they grow fast. They're red pines. So that's what we're proposing on this, on the property line. We are also proposing to leave the vegetation between the new plantings and the homes. So by code, the homes, the new homes in these lots have to be at least 100 feet from existing homes along Stringham Drive. So we maintain that. The lots themselves could be 35 feet from the property line. We push those over another 15 feet. So the lots are proposed to be 15 feet minimum from this property line. This is an easy area for us to put up the plantings. It gets a little bit trickier down here, because there's a town drainage ditch that runs through this area and then down through the sanitary sewer easement. So what we can do up here is we can create a berm. We have enough room to create a berm behind these lots to get some evergreens planted up on top of the berm to screen these houses. Same up here with these two lots. So we've tried to provide adequate screening from the properties to the west, properties to the east of the existing manufactured homes. We're not proposing any additional screening over here. Utilities, it'll all be served with public utilities. We'll extend the water mains and the sanitary sewers out to serve these properties, so there will be no onsite wastewater treatment systems or wells. It'll all be public utilities. Again, there'll be underground gas, underground electric. We're proposing a minimal amount of street lighting. Right now, we've only shown streetlights at the two new intersections. That's typically what we would do in these parks. Each home could have a yard light. They'll obviously have lights above the entry doors. So lighting at nighttime is never a problem. We try to avoid street lighting, because we know a lot of the neighboring properties don't want a lot of streetlights lighting up their neighborhood as well. What did I miss? At the last meeting, there was discussion about a connection over here. This lot here on Stringham Drive is owned by the city, the town of Batavia, and there was concern that there might be an extension of the roadway to connect to Stringham Drive. That is absolutely not our intent. We do not want that. We don't want the traffic from the park exiting and going out on Stringham. They will use College View Drive. I know the town has a traffic consultant that's looked at that, the traffic generated by this mobile home park. We did as well. The amount of traffic generated from 75 new homes will be insignificant entering and exiting from Clinton Street Road. We will not have any traffic concerns at this driveway intersection or other ones that these new park residents might use to exit if they were heading to the east. Currently, these plans have been reviewed by Genesee County Health Department. They permit, they license mobile home parks. Any intent to construct within a mobile home park has to be submitted to the health department for review. They have reviewed the plans. We do have an approval letter from, actually, it came from Genesee County Highway Department. I assume that's because Tim Hens is a licensed engineer, and he performs reviews for the health department, because it has to be reviewed by a licensed engineer. So we do have an approval letter from Mr. Hens for the park expansion, for the water system expansion. We have reached out to a number of service providers in the area, especially the school system. In the engineer's report that we submitted a few months ago that we enhanced, per some comments received from the town, we did include response communications from the service providers. And there haven't been any service deficiencies discovered so far. We've talked to the school system, the water supplier, sanitary sewer treatment facility, electric, gas, healthcare, emergency response. Some of these concerns, we haven't received responses from, but we haven't received any negative responses. Anything that I've seen so far that would cause any concern. Now, maybe the town has seen something else, but so far, we have not received it. Most recently, we received another set of review comments from the town engineer, which we have addressed. I expect we will probably receive additional comments from the town engineer to make sure we've dotted all the i's, crossed the t's, and have addressed all the concerns that he has seen and others have seen. So I think that's where we stand now. I probably forgot something that's important, but I'm sure it'll come up.
You just raise your hand, and we'll call on you. Jeff, did you have anything right now?
I don't. Glenn did a great job of happy answering questions or, you know, try to address any concerns I don't have.
Now, Steve Mountains here, our town engineer. Steve, do you have anything to add before we start getting comments?
No, I don't, nope.
Okay. The planning board, most of the planning boards here, they'll introduce themselves.
Paul Murgizi.
Brittany Woodcock.
Kathy Jazinski.
Donald Partridge.
John Long.
Paul McCullough.
Steve Tanner.
Okay, and we will be listening to your comments. And Sharon Waiters here from the town board. Thank you, Sharon. Okay. A normal way of having is someone will raise their hand and stand up. You can give your name, or you don't have to give your name. You can give your address if you'd like, and that would be fine. We've got somebody who wants to, wait, Glenn, correct.
Just a quick question. Do you want me to respond directly to the person?
Yes, we can do that, because it's not a regular public hearing. So you would like to start out?
Sure. Well, I thought I was gonna come here, and I was gonna tell you how dilapidated and how slummy our mobile home park already is. And you've been there for quite a while, and you haven't repaired anything. But I'd like to know the cost of these mobiles, what they're gonna cost to be put in. And then what are you gonna charge for lot rent? And do you realize that's about 70% of Batavia is rented out? There are very many are coming in and buying in the town or the city of Batavia. The other thing I wanna know, are you putting sidewalks in here? The lakes back there, they're beautiful, but are they gonna be kids safe? Or are we gonna have somebody drowned in those lakes? We've got them falling over the bank at the end of the street where I live by putting things there that's not supposed to be there. So, you know, the water is a concern. You've touched base with the schools and the school buses. Now, are all these kids gonna have to walk all that way through the bumps and the garbage and the nastiness of the roads to get out to the street? That's another concern. My concern is, when you're ready to sell these, and when they drive into this main drive and they look at what you haven't maintained yet, are they really gonna pay the money you're wanting for these mobile homes? I'm sure they're gonna be a high-cost mobile home. Some of us can't afford those mobiles. That's why we're at where we're at. Let's see. My concern is your management. Where is it? I mean, every time you call, you get somebody different on the phone. So are they gonna manage these brand-new, beautiful places back there the same way they're managing the ones out front? I don't know.
Remotely.
You know? I doubt it.
That's a lot of questions.
I forget. No. Starting at the top, the sidewalks, we're not proposing sidewalks.
So the kids are gonna play in the middle of the street? I'm hoping that these are, you're proposing that these are gonna be family dwellings with children in there. So let's put more kids in the middle of our streets to play.
It will not be age-restricted, but we don't propose sidewalks along one side of the street or the other side of the street. The ponds, the way they're constructed, it's very, it's not a steep slope into the pond, and we're required to have what we're calling a safety bench, so that, there's also an aquatic bench. But if you lay the slopes back so it's very walkable, you don't need, the safety bench should slow me down a foot or so, so that anybody who slid in, you're sliding into a foot of water. We don't like the safety benches. We'd rather flatten slopes, because those safety benches, you get a lot of growth on them, kinda like aquatic benches, which we have to have as well for growth. So they will be safe, is what I should say. They will be, portions of them will be deep. They'll be four, five foot deep.
I can just see little kids playing in them. Hot day. Let's go for a swim.
I gotta talk to DEC about this. I know, it's been a concern, but the DEC requires these ponds to be built on all development.
The cost of a mobile. I'm sure that these mobiles are gonna cost over $100,000 because they're double buys and they're newer things. I mean, I can tell you what mine cost in 1990. I've been in this park since 1990, unfortunately.
Don't be, for that question.
And then you keep raising our rot. I appreciate you giving me a free trash can when I already had a one for the system. And it wasn't free. No, you raised it. I rent up $30 to pay for the trash can that I didn't even want to have. So that wasn't even a fair deal there. We were sharing trash, neighbor and I, and we got a lot better deal than what you're giving us now. And by that way, they also did a nice thing for us. They took away our recycling. So we can't even recycle anything anymore. So, you know...
I'm happy to take all of your, I'm happy to answer all your questions. I just, you got about 15 questions there. If you wanna start over, I'll answer this one.
Okay, so the cost. How are you gonna justify the, where are you gonna get these people to come in and buy these lots?
$75,000 to $100,000 for the homes.
And then what are you gonna charge on top of that for the lot rent?
Yeah, they got to pay a lot. Lot rent's probably, will probably be in the low $500s.
So you're thinking that people are gonna be able to walk in and out the street and pay over $1,000?
Paying middle $5 now? That don't make no sense.
For $5, $5, $5, $40?
You raised it 6%, legally, you can only raise it 3%. Did you put $100,000 into the park the last year? Nope. Nothing.
Actually, we can raise it 6%.
Yeah? That's why asking everybody else to pay it. Why don't you do that? All the other parks?
You don't fix the roads.
The holes, look at the holes for this home.
One person at a time.
Ridiculous.
Yeah.
Bullshit.
Well, this is why I said to be kind and respectful. One person at a time.
Like they respect us.
No, please, please, just for our meeting. You can take it outside later if you want, but for here, we do it one at a time.
So where do you propose these people are gonna come from to buy these mobiles? And do you think they're going to drag through the slimy place to get to these beautiful places?
They're gonna come from the local area. There's no housing. All you have to do is read the newspaper. We need more housing at this level. And yes, we do developments like this all over the state. They will drive through the older sections of the park to get to the new section.
Okay.
Can you just answer the one question by not putting in so much now? Everybody look by the entrance of new, when the rest of the park...
One person at a time. This lady's speaking. Can you let this lady speak, please?
Hey, Chuvas. You guys wanna put all this in, but what about the rest of the park? I mean, I've been there 14 years, and it's a complete shambles in some areas. The trees are way overgrown. They keep saying they're gonna get to them, they're gonna get to them, but nobody's got to them.
The holes.
And the holes, the roads. I mean, you wanna do all this?
Let him drive his Mercedes.
You can't take care of what you got.
Excuse me. Excuse me.
One at a time.
We continue to do work every year.
Where?
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 We've done work on the road last year. We did trees last year.
The stop signs leaning like this on a road has been like that all year.
I got this.
You can't even read the stop signs by the mailbox. Look, look right out. We don't read that, I'll show you.
Please, this is not the kind of meeting we can start.
Sir, if you can't be quiet, everyone else is being respectful. Maybe you need to go outside.
Yeah, maybe I should. Who's gonna take me out? Are you? Come on. It's ridiculous. You're sitting here lying to everybody in this place.
I'm not lying.
Yeah, yeah.
No, I'm not.
Yeah, yeah. You said you fixed it, but you haven't done a damn thing in it.
Not a thing.
Has anybody seen you do fix a thing in it?
You're absolutely, you're absolutely 100% lying.
I've got two trees.
I saw what I seen, is they have put in eight new mobile homes. And they started putting these eight new mobile homes in back, what? Last year in the spring, when it was so cold, and it put rots in the yards all the way around them, and they can't give Kyle any dirt to fill the roots around.
You're trying to put in all this new stuff, which is okay.
Please, let the lady behind you speak.
Again, you wanna do a new development, but like I said, without the chiming, why has nothing else been addressed yet? I, like I said, I've been there 13, going on 14 years. The potholes have been there since I've been there, and they're just getting like craters. They haven't been done. They've been cold patched once, that I know of, in the last year.
And they'll be cold patched again.
And the trees. I just had enormous trees come down in my yard.
We did tree work last year. We're gonna do more this year. As you guys know, the park is large. It has not been, it has not been maintained prior to our ownership. We cannot go in and spend $300,000 on trees in one year. We can't. We do not have the resources to do so. We are limited.
But you have the resources to do this, this is over millions of dollars.
This is separate. It has nothing to do besides, it's behind your community.
But that's what I'm saying, is that if you wanna do this, which is millions of dollars, but not the existing that's there now is not getting done. Let's do one thing at a time.
We're doing the best we can.
But if you can't afford what we're...
Again, it's separate. It's separate.
How is it separate? You're gonna own it. You're in the franchise.
We can get financing to do a new development. We cannot put that, because we're gonna generate more income. We are limited by the state, as all you know, to raise the rent. 6%. That comes off about $40 a month per resident. $500 a year. You know how much you can do with $500?
We were told that 6% increase was illegal unless you guys can prove
We did.
that you did over $100,000 of improvements, not including new homes.
We have. We sent all that.
Been there 13 years, I must be seriously blind then, because I haven't seen anything.
Whether or not $100,000 does not go very far. We sent that all in our lease agreement with what we had done to justify that increase.
So you're still gonna tell us?
You'll take the break behind you with the sunglasses.
You guys all said that you're part of the board, right?
The planning board, yeah.
Okay. So have all of you went through this park?
Yes.
And so you know of the concerns, and you're okay with them?
No one up here said they're okay with this. We have letters, that's why we're having this meeting. That's why we invited you to this meeting, to hear what your concerns were, because we had a previous meeting, and we got concerns from people on Stringham Drive, but there was not any people from the mobile home park itself. So we called this meeting and invited you here to hear your concerns in an orderly manner, which we're starting to get to. And we're hearing you. We understand it, and we haven't made any decisions. We aren't gonna make any decisions for several meetings, one or two meetings.
I don't really think anybody's getting here for it. And the traffic's gonna be outrageous.
It already is.
Because it is now. I mean, you guys aren't living there, so you don't see it. And we live on the dead end on Briarwood, and it's usually the most quiet and calm section of the whole place. But the traffic that's been going up there is unreal.
Okay, sir, you're next.
Jeff, I've been there 26 years in this park. In 26 years, I've gone through six owners of the park.
Yep.
The last time anything was done of any significance at all was a cheap layer of asphalt on the streets. They're terrible. That's not good for them.
I have some.
As has been said before, the trees in there need to be cut. The water lines, I live down on Pine Hollow. It's still part of your park. We have a water outage on the average of at least once, maybe twice a month, because it's, the water pressure is so low, it's terrible. I have an on-demand hot water tank. It won't run properly because of the water pressure. This is your park. We pay rent. We want you to do something. And like I said, we've gone through, oh, let's see. In the 26 years I've been there, we've had, except six owners. You're the sixth owner, I think. And we've always had an on-site manager. Now we have to go through your building up there on your Park Drive, and we've had residents go up there to try to get in to talk to you people. Can't get to talk to you.
Bad light communication.
Doors are closed. We call. Nobody returns the call. Maybe if they do, it's two, three days later.
And it's somebody else.
And it's somebody else.
It's months.
You have one manager that won't return any calls or emails, and everything she said to you is, "Do not reply, do not reply." It's getting ridiculous.
I can't agree with you more, and that manager is no longer with us.
Thank you, this gentleman has his hand up.
I wanted to comment on yours with the road paving. It was a minority contractor with a nine-foot spread, and she came through there for a good price with the previous owners. And the thin layer is starting to chip up now, six, seven years later. Now Cook Properties has to box it out, dig it out, and patch it the proper way, not just throw up a piece of gum in it.
And I understand that.
Yeah, I get that. But they're picking up the pieces. I'm not defending them, I'm just responding. And this lady in front, Jeff stood up to answer her 15 questions. She started, you started. So that lady in front still has to have answers. One at a time, be courteous, or we'll be here till midnight.
Thank you, sir.
I just might point at you.
I'm happy to, I don't worry about that.
Well, I know that when the people come in to take over mobiles in the section I am in, I'm clear down in the, used to be retirement section. My husband retired out of the Navy after 30 years. So he's done 40 years in service to live in this mobile home court. Anyway, so my concern is, new moving in, they're gonna be pricey. How are they gonna drive through bumpy roads to get to these beautiful new places that you're proposing putting in? I wouldn't wanna buy, driving past what they're gonna drive by to get there. I mean...
Again, I understand your concern. We'll continue to patch, to patch the road.
Well, my worry about the patching is about the time you get it patched, then your water's gonna blow out, and you're gonna have to dig it all up and repair the water. Because as you understand, and you know full-heartedly, since 1990, we've not had a single new water line put in there. And the power line that behind my house, I'm waiting for it to burn up, because it's never been repaired or anybody's looked at it. It's really in sad shape. And I'll tell you, I live at 5 Forest Ed's Drive. You can look by my house and see that I keep it very nice. I just wish I wouldn't bottom out in my car going out of the road. But you're gonna fix that, I'm quite sure.
We will.
And you said no sidewalks. I think you need to think about sidewalks so the kids have got someplace to entertain themselves other than the middle of the road. I'm not too keen on the idea. You said no lights. Lights are, need to be lights in there so that people can see what's going on, because we've got some pretty shady characters that have been living in our section of the mobile home park.
And we live on the darkest road. We live on the darkest road. It's pitch black at night over our way.
And I'm worried that if you get people in there, they're gonna have lawnmowers and mow their lawns? I mean, so far, you haven't had, you've got all these rules, but you haven't had a single person make anybody follow the rules. I mean, so far you haven't had, you've got all these rules, but you haven't had a single person make anybody follow the rules. We have a mobile home around the corner from us that has had a mattress up beside the house for going on a year. Going on a year.
We do our best to violate residents.
Well, you need to drive in and you need to, you need to drive in there and you need to take a look.
I've been in there multiple times. I understand. There, there's certainly areas of, of concern and, and things that we need to approve, improve upon. Um, we are extremely limited and handcuffed by New York State about what we can do with our residents. And I, violating, violating residents for, for, for not abiding by the rules, we do it all the time. But if someone's paying their rent and they're not following the rules, we have very little, very little power to do anything.
Yeah, I understand. Money talks.
And, and, and all of us, if everyone's unhappy about that, like I am, is talk to your, talk to your local, your local, uh, state legislators.
Well, I talked to these people last time we stood here.
They're not making that decision.
Well, there was a guy that done it, drive around and look at the mobiles and tell them if they need to be condemned or whatever and I don't, never got a word back. I then went and took a look at it, but it sure is not.
Their hands are tied on that.
Very safe place to live.
To your point on, to your point on that, the couple of planning board members went through today, actually, and, uh, they all thought the park looked great. Um, we don't have any current violations.
Are you serious?
Please.
Is the code guy here tonight?
He's not here, but, but he, Dan Lane does say that this is the best.
It's the best, it's the best parking behavior.
This, this gentleman's got his.
Guys, come on.
It's the best parking behavior.
Excuse me, this, this gentleman's got his hand up.
I don't have a question, but I've got a couple of things that I wanna add to it.
Okay.
I, I live at College View at the end of the road. I'm glad you came down to meet. I'm sorry about how, the way it is, but this is, everybody's kinda mad. You know it. You guys hired a paving company two years ago to do the roads and the potholes, right? Within six months, the potholes all chewed up. In fact, last year when they came back, I ca, I contacted one of the people doing the paving and I asked them, are you the same paving company that did the paving the year before? And he said, well, yes, I am. I said, well, could you tell this to your boss? He doesn't know what the f- is doing because the potholes didn't even last six months. They'd lifted up. But nobody from your company checked out the paving company, but yet gave them the contract the second time. The potholes, guess what? Six months later, they come around the fall. They're already chewed up and already down, second time in a row. But guess what? I hope you don't hire them the third time. Now, I'm not making questions. I'm just giving you some facts so you got more information. You mentioned about the roadway. My suggestion is, and I know there's gonna be a big problem about doing it, but you got Holly Road right there. Could you consider maybe making that option to have a road coming in? I know emergency vehicles need the shortest road. But it would be nice to say, hey, why don't they come in from Holly Road, which is maybe not even a, a hundred yards away from this trailer park? As opposed to coming through there. Then you mentioned College View. Oh my God, I live on College View. And you, you, you'd say, well, there's not gonna be that much of a significant amount of cars. With seventy-five double-wide trailers, you're gonna need double incomes. That means two cars. With a minimum of about a hundred and forty cars twenty-four, seven, because people have different schedules coming through that park. And you're gonna say, well, that's not a significant amount of cars. Uh, yes, it is. You're gonna change the name from Country Metals to City Metals. If you could have access to Holly Road considering, that's all, just to consider if you could do it legally to say buy a road strip. And then you're gonna need reinforcing on some of the existing roads to handle the fire trucks, just in case there was a fire. They've gotta have adequate roads to drive down too. Um, I'm not giving any questions. I'm just giving what I see. And I hope this helps you as far as having a wider view of everybody's problems in there. You know what I mean? Don't hire the same paving company again, please. That what they do is they go down, they, they, they blow off a little bit of the, of the loose dirt. They don't even put an emulsion down or, or glue to bind it or even heat it. They just throw some stuff down, they come by and they run it over. That's not the way you fix a puddle.
All this to know.
You know, if you're gonna last a puddle for six months, those are the people to hire. But if you want it to last three or four years, hire a company that really knows what they're doing. Come back and inspect their work. The, the tree company that you did, big complaint was, I, I mentioned this to a Shannon Cordy. They remove the trees for around thirty-five hundred dollars a tree. I asked the company, I go, you must be doing good with the firewood. And he goes, oh, no, we make more money getting the trees down than worrying about the firewood. So they filled up the back road off of Blair Road, I think it's called. They filled it all up with their trees. They pushed all the crap there. When you contract to remove a tree, that means cut it down, remove it off the property, take it out of there. They didn't do that. But somebody came with a bunch of dump trucks about a few weeks ago. They unloaded a certain area. No, did they go all the way back and take the, the whole road out that they dumped? No, they didn't. Health Department, from what I understand, said you can't have that much garbage there because it's a fire hazard. So you hire a, a tree company that doesn't even do their job because nobody follows up and says, hey, you're supposed to remove all those trees off the property. I don't know what the deal is. I'm thinking this, and I hope I'm wrong. If you own a company for a tax reason, you might own a paving company or you might own a tree company. I'm not saying you do, but that's how you get around the tax things. You, you keep everything in-house. You don't give an outside bid to anybody that may do it professionally. Um, my background is construction union, so I, I had to deal with a lot of BS over my years before I retired. I'm not trying to be a stickler into you. I'm just saying you need to open your view and actually look at everything they're doing. If you're paying somebody big money, hey, you tell them, you're not getting the other half of the money until you do your job right. Go back and do your job right, or don't get the job at all. And then go to Better Business Bureau and write a bad report so they never get a job again. I hope some of this helps you, but.
Hey, Thomas, thank you. We appreciate your confidence.
Thank you, Mr.
We'll look at both, uh, the tree and the painting.
Me, Mary.
Yeah, we got several hands up here. Uh, yeah, you were first. Go ahead.
Um, in the letter, it said you were gonna talk about roads, sanitary and, uh, waste lines. Now, are these new mobile homes gonna be tagged onto the existing system that runs through all our homes now? Cause like St. College Avenue, I was there at four o'clock in the morning when Greg Post repaired a piece. It's eight-inch oakite under there. That stuff is seventy-five years old. He put a piece in, put the clamp couplings on and then turned the water on at the street cause there's two water mains that control that whole park. Filled up the whole trench twenty-two feet in like forty seconds. I mean, his guys were scrambling out of there. And it, when you replace that ten, twenty-foot chunk, the other oakite, it, it, it starts failing. It's just like putting a stint. And, and you're gonna tag onto that and try to increase the volume through a seventy-five-year-old pipe. It's gonna rupture. And then when the temperature changes come, it's gonna freeze and bust. So that compromises our utilities, cause we're piggybacking onto that new section. Is there any way to, you know, put newer pipes in and leave the existing system alone? Cause you don't have the money to fix it, you just said. But yet you're gonna tag onto it. I don't understand.
Unfortunately, no, no. Um, you know, we'll, we'll continue. One, one of the nice advantages of doing this project is, is the value that we, that we add. And when we add that value, um, we can, we can refi, we can refinance and we can pull money out. And we've, we've done this in, in multiple parks throughout the state. When we get that big chunk of money, we, we always invest a significant amount of it back into the park.
You guys own eight thousand ads in strip malls. I've been on your website. You're huge. We've seen the reviews too.
Okay, this lady's got her hand up again.
Not in my pocket, back in, back in the park.
But, but you bought bad cops. And I don't know how many, I've been with the understanding, you jumped in and you bought a hundred mobile home parks. Seems like a sensible thing would have been to slow down and say, well, let's buy this and over here fix it up some.
We will never, at, at six percent, we will never get enough money to fix all this infrastructure. It just will not happen. Anyone can, we can do the math. It, it just, it will not happen. So the only, the only way this infrastructure is gonna get replaced is by us doing this project.
The loan from the bank. It's a different kind of.
Okay, this lady in the blue.
Fixing what's in there now.
This lady's got her hand up.
We can't do the math. The math doesn't work. We are restricted at how much we can raise rent every year. Six, six percent is the max.
This, this lady's got her.
We cannot go in, we cannot.
No, I'm just saying that you guys wanna put this in, but you're saying that's gonna bring value, but there's no things getting done that need to be done. Where's that coming from?
The value will happen after we, after we fill up with all brand new homes.
Okay, yes.
Okay, so you're saying after putting this in, then you'll be able to fix the rest of the park?
I'm saying that that's what we've done in the past. Yep.
Because, yeah, because if you can't afford to fix it now, then it doesn't make sense to add on to the park. We live the end of Briarwood Terrace.
Well, I think you're wrong in your, in your, in your theory, but.
Okay, well, we've also had seven water main breaks since November twenty-ninth. I have all the.
It's cause we, we have seventy-year-old infrastructure.
Well, take care of what needs to be done first.
Guys, we, we cannot do, the math does not work. If we replace all the water lines, I'm just throwing a number and I'm probably pretty close. Probably upwards of a million dollars. How, how, how could we possibly get that from, from our residents? This park is a standalone park that has none to do with anything else that we own. If we can't generate the income from, from the lot rent to pay for that, how, how else are we supposed to pay for it?
How are you paying for that?
Finances.
So then why can't you finance it?
Because, because brand, brand new water lines don't bring in any extra value. I'm just telling you how banks look at it. Once we do this, we stabilize it and then we're gonna have, we will, we will refinance. We'll have a, a good amount of money. We've done this in, like I said, in many, many of our other parks, we reinvested in the park. Cause that's makes, it makes sense. It makes good economic sense. But right now, it's just, we, we don't have the fund. If, if, I would love to pave all, repave all the roads, replace all the water, the sewer and electric. But on, your lot rent would have to go to probably eight, nine hundred dollars a month and no one wants that.
I'm gonna move back to live in a house.
That we don't want.
No one wants it. And we can't do it. This is a way for us to, to improve the park.
We put in eight new mobiles.
Okay, there's someone speaking.
They put in eight new mobiles and they did it in the fall when it was the crappiest time of year to put in new mobiles and they're still sitting there. So if you can't sell those new eight ones, matter of fact, it took six of your wonderful men to come in and put a gas line in the one across the street, which I don't think is even connected in yet. And you should really stop and take a good look at how they set these things up and how the steps are level and the wonderful work that, that went ship that was done on these. If you do the same thing to here, I don't know where you're gonna get the people to be crazy enough to pay that kind of money and owe you every month for a lot rent.
Fortunately, we'll worry about that.
Okay, is there another question? Someone back here had their hand up.
I'm up there. I wanna go to the board.
Sure.
If I can, I can't, uh, do a conference. I know, I know everybody's got this, you know what I mean? The only one I got is the same one I did.
Okay, this gentleman's got the floor.
Last time. I live right here. Right here. Now, you're talking about putting a berm with trees on it, right?
That is true.
Now, there is a seventy-foot ditch behind me.
Yes.
That goes from there to there. Now, that's roughly, roughly seventy feet.
Yes.
That's the town right away that the town paid for. Through the trailer park, they come in, took all the trees down. We're the only, there's only two houses here that's wide open. Wide open lots.
Correct.
But you're gonna put a berm, you're gonna put trees on it. We have a ditch behind our house, a town ditch. They have a right away and a seventy-foot from my post to the ru, the right away. Now, you're gonna go how far after that?
On the other side of the ditch.
Will you be right there then?
Yeah, I mean, the ditch is, uh, where are we? Right, right here. Right here. Yeah, the ditch is right here. The berm is going on the east side of the ditch. Outside the, the drainage swale that runs this way. But that's a pretty substantial swathe behind your house, so.
That's seventy-four.
We would love to be on the property line. We can't because of that ditch.
No, I don't want you on the property.
Well, how about, how about the trees?
Don't want you over there at all.
Huh?
The trees, were your trees being? We don't want, that's why we got the berm.
You answered that for me last time too, but I still concerned. That's why I'm asking it right now. You're gonna put a berm up and you're gonna put trees on it, right? That's gonna be a right now.
Okay, I understand. It's out the plan. So whatever's on the plan, it has to be done.
Not that I don't trust anybody. Well, that's why, that's why I go to the board. I understand.
That'll be part of our, our.
It's part of the project review.
It's part of our project review, so I can assure you that.
We give you guys the right away to go down beside your house and put the pipes in with no questions.
It actually is on the plan.
Yeah. Yeah, it is, it is on the plan.
It is on the plan.
It will likely revise that because we found that putting trees on berms, it doesn't work, um, so.
Yeah, because they, they'll get water.
Yeah, we'll request, we'll request the revision.
You get a good whip, you get some pine trees and they'll kinda.
They don't die. They, they die because they're getting water.
We just want something there that's, you know what I'm saying? That's.
I just want to, I don't depend on the kindness.
Which makes sense.
Yeah. Okay, who else?
Where's Holly's driveway? I'm, where's Holly's road?
Holly, Holly Road looks like a.
Is that College Road?
About three, yeah, College Road about three quarters of a mile as the road lies from this development. I looked it up in my cell phone.
Thank you. I didn't know myself. Is there any woman's new question? Yes, sir.
Yeah. I, um, I live on Five Forest Edge and, uh, back in the winter, they came in to put a new unit in at Eight Forest Edge and came in with the Tomcats and, and then one of the Cook Property gentlemen in white truck drove entirely through my front yard. Left an eight-inch ditch in March. I'm still waiting for that ditch to go away, so I went out there by myself. Spent five hours, got some dirt from the woods, cause I couldn't get any wood, you know, from any dirt from anybody else coming to fix it. Spent five hours doing it and went out there two weeks ago and the same white pickup truck is parked on the exact same spot. I lost my mind. I apologized later to all five of the guys, but, and I said to the guy, I spent five hours doing this. This is my grass seed. My dirt, and you parked in the softest, worst spot. And he goes, well, I'll go park on somebody else's grass then. I go, dude, park in my driveway, it's right there. So what'd he do? He goes and parks in her driveway. I mean, let's get some rockets science. So anyways, six months later now, the ditch is still, I fixed it, but you can see it if you come and look at my property. And Eight, Eight Forest Edge is done. Uh, there's nothing pretty done on it. Kyle has to come in and use a, a weed whacker to cut the whole thing, cause the Tomcat ditches are still there. And now there's ten feet of vines and trees growing on the backside of it. Nothing's getting fixed. Now, I have no hope that Tommy's gonna come now that we're heading towards September and finishing number eight, so it doesn't look like a dump. And this is your new stuff you put in there and nobody wants it. In fact, I sent my friend, I gave the number to call, cause he's looking for a place. Nobody ever returned his call. He called twice. So I got a guy to buy it and yet they, nobody answers the phone until he come in, he could make an offer. And it's just frustrating that nothing gets fixed and, you know, so just drive to the place and see it. I mean, and then they tried to put another unit on two or four, whatever it is, uh, Forest Edge. And they found they couldn't complete it and now it's just a mess of a dug up place that never got finished. It's just really. And I said, live there. I have to walk, look at this mess now because we, we're gonna make our money. We drove off to the next project. And I don't have any confidence that if you're taking all your men's, the men to build that, which I understand that helps you. But it, who's ever supposed to be helping us now, there's nothing, nothing's getting done.
And you're not mentioning your emergency.
Thank you, thank you. The gentleman behind you has got his hand up.
Same thing along the lines with him. I live on the corner of Briarwood, Old Meadow Lane, been there seventeen years. Uh, I, I know you don't have control over Waste Management or Cassell or Amazon, but they all cut the corner. I did the same thing. Uh, topsoil, grass seed, a thousand gallons of water, and then they just do the same shit three months later. And, and it's, it's never been fixed. Kyle is, is like a hundred and fifty percent on your side. He's the best employee I've ever seen.
I agree.
And I've worked with his grandfather too, Joe Garland.
Undertated.
I'm a retired electrician. He used to call me for splices when he's coring holes. I go over and splice and, you know, walk away. But I weed whacked that whole corner. I mean, I would like it to look pristine too, but I'm not gonna make a career out of it. Especially if it's your problem.
Yeah.
Nothing. Like they put a new trailer on on Briarwood and then they put another one in on Old Meadow Lane. And they swung it around, put big ruts in my, in my yard and, uh, nobody fixes it. I, I know this is petty, but.
No, it's not.
It adds up.
Yeah.
And, and you say you got people going through and the park looks beautiful. Well, open your eyes and slow down the car. I'm sorry.
Okay, this lady.
Thank you.
You have, you also have an emergency thing of tree wise. I don't know why Jerry didn't mention it to you. Jerry's my neighbor. He lives across the street. Before you came, the lot you just put a single wide in was, was a double wide. And it had a big tree fall off the neighbor's property on to that mobile home and wiped out the mobile home, so that's why they took it out. That's why it was an empty lot. Jerry has trees that are leaning right over his mobile. So if we have a nice windstorm or ice storm or something, they're gonna fall on his mobile. So you better, that would be something you need to come in and take a look at and not wait for two years down the line for him to come and trim. and not wait for two years down the line for him to come and trim the trees.
We're doing, like I said before, we're doing more trimming this summer.
And I told the man that owns the property, and he said, "Well, they were supposed to put the mobile homes, what was it, twenty feet from his property line, so it's not his concern, because they're not twenty feet from his property line." So he's not gonna fix the trees.
Thank you for your comment. There's a gentleman back there. Yes, sir.
Yes, I got a few questions. I had an incident with one of my neighbors. His dog assholes came over, almost bit me. I called the sheriff, the sheriff came out. He said, "I gotta call you guys." Well, I called you guys, and I never got an answer back. We need a number at night so we can contact you.
I, I apologize, I don't know why, why you're having trouble getting, uh, having trouble getting through. We have, uh, not only your, your property manager's phone number, but we also have the office phone number, and we have an emergency number that you can call. I'm happy to give those to you afterwards.
We don't, we don't wish it is. With the trees during this last...
I'm right here, just FYI, I'm Katie Aiken. I'm Katie Aiken, yes.
We called you in March?
They're riding, middle piece fell out.
Yeah, I think he's stalking though. Yeah, we can chat later if you want, but he's stalking.
And if they fall, they're gonna hit you later, 'cause they're right there. The person came over supposedly, it sounded like they're poking on the wood, well, that thing is an electrician. I gotta go, what's their name?
She's number six.
So, how do they figure what's a priority and what's not?
As, as you know, the park is, is riddled with, with trees, and no one has caught them for, for probably at least fifteen years. So we gotta take the ones that are, we, we go after the dead ones first, and then after that, we, it's dead ones and ones that are, are safety issues, and we, we work our way back from there. Again, we can't, we can't do all the trees in, in one day.
Another question I have, we have kids riding whites through this park. We have delivery trucks that are going more than the speed limit, tell them five miles an hour. They're flying through this park, someone's gonna get killed.
So what are they gonna do about that? That's not...
Speed bumps up or something?
We got problems.
We've even had residents...
Excuse me, we can't hear what he's saying. Go, go, go ahead, we didn't hear your question.
He just, 'cause the delivery drivers are speeding through, um, the park, and they're concerned about, uh, children playing in the street and riding their motorcycles.
We have some residents that also speed through the park.
Did you ever think of speed bumps?
We got potholes, why do we need speed bumps?
We'll beat the potholes.
Obviously, it's not slowing them down.
My brother, he's been there all the time here.
We put in speed bumps before, and then people complained about speed bumps. But it was certainly something we could look at, you know?
Okay, you've got a lot to look at, and you've heard, you've heard a lot today, and this gentleman's gonna add to it.
I got just one last question, yeah. Since we finally got, I, I've met the little, she's right next to me, she's our manager now.
Shannon?
Yeah, sure.
Ritty, yeah.
How often do your managers come up and go through their parks that they're supposed to be managed? And just check things out and write people up?
We miss Katie Durham, that's all I can say.
Me too, she's, she's...
She was awesome, and she wants to come back, but not physically, once a month, coming through the park and work from at home.
Do they not have four...
You need her back. I gotta, I gotta say, Chuck, you need her back, 'cause she was the bomb.
She, she won't sit.
She did great.
She won't come back, so...
No, because you want her in the office, that's why.
Yeah, of course.
How often are they supposed to come up?
We require them to go through a park at, at a minimum of once per quarter, um, and then more depending, depending on the situation, so...
And we have onsite, you guys have mentioned Kyle.
Yeah, Kyle's always telling us what's going on too.
Kyle's the best.
Kyle's the best.
He's a great kid.
I wish we had, I wish we had fifty more of them.
Yeah.
Find them all.
He doesn't know that you think he's the best, so you better figure out how you're gonna let him know that.
Okay, this gentleman there here has something.
I know your concerns about kids on the bikes and me with, uh, waste management and all that stuff, but these guys can't babysit the contractors that go through our park. And in fact, like, the end of Old Metal Lane with all that crap in the woods, I see trailers go in there, and I don't even think the people live there. I think they just stop, drop, and dump. You know what I mean?
What you do is you take a picture...
I mean, for years, not just once.
Take a picture of the vehicle and you call the cops. I did it when they went to the end of Crystal Lane, a pickup was there, and I took a picture and I sent it off to the cops.
Excuse me, he's still got the floor.
That's fine, but all this stuff, like, went out of hand when we lost our onsite park manager. Now, I noticed a brown SUV up near their front building. Is there a manager onsite?
No, somebody's on site. Somebody lives there.
We used to walk right in, drop the, you know, lot rent, the box up front. I get it, all this, uh, brick and mortar stuff costs you a ton of money. I get that. Emails, charges for, for paying from your account, three and a half percent. Uh, debit, if you want a debit, it's another charge. You know, I, I thought all that stuff would be included in the six percent, 'cause we went up to five forty-two ninety-two. You know, you might as well round it up to five fifty, and then every other month you get water. And for some reason, last October, the sewer disappeared. Whether your software system can't fill it, or the town of Batavia doesn't get the water readings to you quick enough, I, I don't know, but...
Kyle doesn't reading, town of Batavia's out of the picture long ago.
You, you're catering to an older crowd, and, and they're used to brick and mortar. For them to do an email, or make a phone call and not get talked to in three days, it pisses them off. They'd rather go up, open the door, and, you know, see Joe Junior or something. I, I know he's gone south, Katie Dur, everybody went south. I get it, but there's gotta be a compromise.
Just a change to him, is fine.
Sorry.
I mean, I, I don't know what to say, I mean, that's, I, I hear you, I hear your concerns. I, I understand what you're saying about not being able to do some of the things that you're used to doing. Um, I mean, to be frank, that's the world we live in, and, and we, we all have to adapt to change.
Yeah, but you got eighty, ninety-year-old people that live in the park sixty, seventy, that don't know how to use those computers.
And they have to rely on, on family or friends to help.
Some of them don't have any family, I take care of a lady up the road from me.
They talk to their friends.
I'm doing it, I'm, I'm life example. I'm taking care of my neighbor, because her daughter doesn't have time, she lives out of town, and I do everything for her. She doesn't have access to a computer, she doesn't know how to do all that. That's the kind of stuff that you gotta be considerate of with the other.
You don't need a computer to, to live in our communities. You can, you can make a phone call and send your revenue.
But when you call, Jeff, that's what we're saying, when we call. Now, for instance, and I'm gonna tell you what happened.
Three days ago.
Two days ago, I called and I said, "Hey, I got an interest of somebody that wants to purchase a trailer up the road from me, can you give me any information?" Called me back, I left the number. She called me back yesterday. Now, I called months ago about the potholes and about other stuff, the trees and whatnot. Nobody has yet to call back about that yet. But the money, soon as that money's talking, you wanna sell something, they call you back.
I don't know why they call you back, I mean, we know what our projects are.
I know you don't know why they don't call back, but these are the concerns that we all have on the phone calls being returned.
Yeah, and, and I can speak a little bit to that, where, I'm Katie, this is Shannon, so we are the people that you get a hold of.
Lauren, talk to me about the trailer that we sold.
You're fine, it, it's almost nice to sit here in anonymity and listen to you guys speak, so... But now, I'll introduce myself, just so that you know. Um, we did unfortunately get a poor park manager, it then managed poorly with a couple of people. We are trying to get better. We are trying to address concerns. I think, you know, Shannon, through text messages and phone calls back and emails, like, we have attempted to make this a better relationship. Yes, it's gonna take a little while to mend it, um, and the brokenness that had happened in the past, but I'm committed to be here, I have been here for years. Um, this is my start to come over your community. I actually used to work with Katie at Parkland, I worked with her for three years prior to coming here. So I'm very familiar with your park, it's just now I'm able to talk about it, and I'm glad to be here. And Shannon is definitely trying to help.
Katie Aiken?
So, Katie Aiken.
I just wanted, I didn't hear you.
No, that's okay, sometimes I don't project very well.
No, you're doing a great job.
So, we are here to help, we are here to communicate. We understand that it does take just a little while to get through everything, but we are here to help. Kyle, amazing, he's been with the community for, I think shy of ten years.
He's frustrated.
Oh, I know. And I talked to, talked to Kyle.
Suffer a lot of stress.
Yeah, so I've talked to Kyle, we've got a service team that's coming and helping him. And as we hire more people, we want to give you the support, we want to give you what you want, we want to address your problems. There is part of it that does come financially, but we want to start doing this. At the end of August, we have an, a crew coming out to cut down trees. It is scheduled, so, like, we are working on that.
You have a crew, or you have one person?
A crew.
Three, four man crews.
Yeah.
Are they gonna remove it, or are they gonna just dump it after they cut it?
They'll take it with them.
Yeah.
Thank you.
This gentleman's got his hand up.
Katie, this is kinda directed to you. Remember a couple months ago, I called and I said, "My lights were flickering, single phase in, brown out." You sent a guy out, he chopped the line in load side off my main breaker and said, "We gotta replace the meter in the pedestal." Well, it's still going on, I've sent you, you know, email, one or two. Um, I'm an electrician, so if I wanted to take my panel out, I cannot take the wires off my main breaker, because there's no pedestal breaker. I'd have to cut the seal, pull the meter, and change my panel. I, I wanna do that eventually to upgrade, you know, 'cause I can get the panel for a hundred and fifty bucks and throw it in myself, but I have no control over the main now.
You can't pull the gear unless you get a nice, uh...
I was gonna say, right?
No, I can do whatever I want with a pair of clips.
Oh, my gosh.
Pull it out. I've done it.
Don't say that too much out loud, but we'll get your, we'll get the same contractor out there.
I think this is gonna go along the way to, to helping you.
I have one for the town.
What's that?
I have one question for the town.
Yes.
I'm with the understanding that the town of Batavia did not want us, mobile home people to individually pay our water bill. Does anyone up there know why we cannot individually pay our water bill? Our water bill has to come to Cook's property, they tell us what's in our lot rent, we have to, we don't see any paperwork as to how much we used or anything, it's just, "This is your water, this is your sewage." And I was with the understanding that the town was...
We're gonna have, we're gonna hear from the town. Steve, do you have anything to say about that?
Yeah, it was a, it was a joint decision between previous park, um, owner slash manager. Because of the leaks and the master meter readings, and, 'cause we did it quarterly, um, they can better find when they have leaks and address issues that you all have with water leaks quicker, saving essentially everybody money doing it that way. Um, 'cause we just read quarterly. And then this way, they'll, they can have the meter reads quicker and identify a problem almost five months before it actually would, you'd see it on a quarterly bill. So that was kind of the decision way back when.
My concern was, and I'm gonna thank them for not doing it, when you, they first decided to do this, they had sent us out a notification that they kindly were going to charge us twenty dollars in order to pay our bill, and we thank you very much for not doing that. But that's my concern, later down the line, they're gonna get this idea, "Oh, we said this," and they're gonna start doing that to us. Is there any way we can come back and start paying our bill? Like I said, I've been in that mobile home park since nineteen ninety, I am a very good bill payer, and I've never been late paying my bill, once I made a mistake, and it was, and I told them about it, but...
So you're worried about them charging us an extra twenty dollars?
No, twenty dollars.
They're not gonna do that, why would you?
Well, they said they could.
Okay.
Yes.
So, my question is, if this plan does go through and gets approval and whatnot, how long is it gonna take?
For construction?
Yeah.
Um, if we got approval, let's say we got approval today, which, you know, is not gonna happen. Um, it'd probably take us about, we'd have construction done in about twelve months, 'cause we have to go out and bid, and go back and forth, and, and then do the construction.
Now, what type of involvement is it gonna be on Briarwood as far as us coming and going?
Uh, nothing, 'cause everything will be back here, so they'll just be coming in and staying back there. All the heavy equipment will, will stay there until the project's done. Um, after that, um, with this many lots, it'd probably take us about, about anywhere between two and three years to, to fill it up.
Jeff, isn't there a, a limit, a weight limit on Briarwood because of the water line running down through there?
Um, not, not that I'm aware of.
That's a newer section too.
We were told that we were limited, the garbage trucks that came in...
Does the town know anything about that?
They want garbage trucks come through, because you didn't want all the heavy trucks coming in onto the road.
Yeah, anything, anything they're using won't be any heavier than a garbage truck. And again, it'll, it'll, all the excavators and the earth movers, they'll, they'll stay back there for the duration of the project. The only thing heavy going back and forth will be, uh, pickup trucks.
Yes.
Do you already have financing for this?
We're not.
Is there anything new that we haven't...
We can't get financing until the project's approved.
Right.
Is there anything new that we haven't covered that someone wants to add?
Let me ask you.
Yes, sir.
You have the prints in front of you that show what you're gonna be doing on each road you're gonna be using, such as the accessible, you mentioned Blairwood, you mentioned College View. I, I'm concerned, because I live on College View, and I'm concerned, what are your plans on that particular road you're planning on doing to make a, a through road to back there? Because again, it involves more traffic in front of my place.
We're not doing anything on College View.
Thank you very much. Let's keep it that way.
Long as you're on the subject, Old Metal Lane, what happens there? You're clearing out all that debris for a reason.
That will connect.
That, yeah, that'll be a through seat, that's gonna get some action.
So your main, your main, your main traffic concern would be, what, Old Metal Lane out all the way around the bend out to Clinton Street?
Uh, that one and, and Briarwood.
And Briarwood, okay, so you...
And, I'm sorry, too, we have another one over here.
So they can cut out and come down into the middle section to come out to the thirty-three.
Yeah, they'll have three ways in and out.
So there's another mobile home park that's gonna have more traffic in it, is the middle section.
Okay, is there any, anyone else that has a comment or a question? We've covered so many things, I can't think there'd be anything else, yes, sir.
Just give her a quick question for that. You said you had to date financing, you're gonna add seventy-six new trailers. Once you prove the potential for you to make money, you can get more financing and possibly upgrade the older section?
That's what I've been doing my, my whole career.
No, I, I don't either. I've read the history, you and your brother, I, I get it.
Yep.
You're entrepreneurs.
I almost filed for bankruptcy a couple times, uh, had multiple foreclosures twenty years ago, and, uh, I've learned my lesson, this is, this is what we do. We, 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 we take our parks, we, we fix them up, we refinance them, and, and we invest more money, some money back into the parks, and then we, we buy other stuff, so...
Are you planning on doing another increase next year?
I mean, let's not be, let's be reasonable, three percent was fine, but if I'm not mistaken, under New York state law,
it says that it has to be reviewed at six percent by a, by a judge, not by anybody else. And I didn't get that meeting with the judge to actually hear his opinion, but here it comes, another year, maybe next March, next April. Are you gonna say, "Hey, we need more finance morning, let's go another three or six percent?"
Anything we do here is separate, again, separate, has nothing to do with your lot rent.
It's the old part, I'm not prepared to pay another, say, let's say it was another thirty dollars. Now, even though we got an eight point seven percent raise in our social security, you actually cut into about one and a half to two percent, depending on what you're getting per month. Everybody's different. You actually took about one and a half, two percent of that eight-point-seven for your, for your six percent increase. I did the math on that one. But are you gonna be doing another increase next year, and are we gonna be assuming that it's a step program, that every year you're gonna be doing another increase?
As long as our expenses go up, or if the park we have to raise the rent? We don't have a choice. We don't have a choice.
So, there's no cap on it at all coming in?
There is a cap. New York State cap hit at six percent.
No, I'm saying to stay at a certain amount per month.
As long as our expenses stay flat, we would, before rent control, guys, this is again something that you can talk to your state, to all me about. Prior to rent control, we, me and my brother, we raised rent maybe every other year, ten, fifteen dollars, and now, we're, since we are capped, we don't know what is, what is coming around the corner. We have, we have no choice but to hit the, to hit the maximum every, every year. Again, 'cause we don't know what's gonna happen. Our expenses, and not only in this park, but in all of our parks throughout New York State, have gone up anywhere between ten and twenty percent. We're, we're, we have less on the bottom line this year than we did last year. And again, this is, we're, we're just doing what we can to, 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 to keep everyone at a minimum of satisfaction. We, we don't have, we don't have a lot of...
Do you have something else?
Like I said earlier, if everyone was happy and we could raise the rent to six, seven, eight hundred dollars, we would love to just redo everything. I would love for everyone to be tickle pink, but we have, just like the city and the town, we all have limited resources that we have to, we have to work with.
It's the utopian world. You can't do it.
And we try to spend it in the best way possible, so.
Raise everybody else's except country matters.
You should tell them, Jeff, about Chila Avenue near the Moose Lodge. You evicted like thirty-five tenants. It was a scum hole here.
And we're, it's still, it's still better, but we're still working.
I know. Half a dozen people that live there, and I think I'm in better spot than they are. Believe me.
Thank you.
Okay, this has been, I think, very productive. I think we've got, we've heard a lot. They've heard a lot, and you've had a chance to get it off your shoulders. So, this is good.
Now, the big thing is, what's really gonna take place after all this?
Well, if you listen carefully to your answers, you kinda know that. So, I, I think the answers were good to the questions, and if you don't feel you got the right answers, email me. I gave, I gave every one of you my email address. So, don't be afraid to email, and we'll get answers for you.
Cook Properties was not legally obligated to hold this meeting. It's you that...
The planning board asked for it, and they, and they agreed. We, we...
Right.
The planning board asked for it, and, and they...
Thanks for being on our tour.
And I think it was wonderful that they came to answer your questions, 'cause I know you all had questions. So, I hope this satisfied you, but it's not the end. We're gonna still have to go through the planning board, and we're gonna have to have an environmental review, and at that time, we talk about what this project would do to the community. And that's kind of what we wanted from you, so we can address that.
And you also have to think about the people that live on Stringham Drive.
Yes, we do.
Because I have family. They're family.
Absolutely. And, and they, they know that, 'cause they were at the last meeting, and all these, all these similar questions.
I think it depreciates their section.
No more meeting. We're gonna have meetings, but...
If this happens, and I feel bad for them.
This is the last informational meeting, but that doesn't mean you can't get information. So, if, if you, if you need to hear from us, I, like I said, I gave you my email address. Anything I get, I give to the whole planning board, so everyone will be aware of what, if you have any other questions.
So, from here on out, it's either contact you or Katie through Cook Properties and handle it on an individual basis. There won't be another meeting like this?
There won't be another informational meeting. We will have meetings where we'll do the environmental impact, and we'll, we'll do the site plan. We'll, we'll look at the whole project. We've got the plans here, and...
What's real, they fixed their lawn when they put these mobiles in, and they put the border around it nice and smooth, so they don't have cats and raccoons living under the mobiles, and their steps don't lean crooked, and, you know, if you're gonna put it in, put it in gorgeous and put it in the right way, not the way you put in the mobiles next door to me.
Well, I don't think they did that. I think since you've owned, you haven't owned it that long, have you?
We put in some new homes.
Oh, you did? Oh, okay.
They did it.
Okay.
You know, we had to get a C of O for every home that we put in that, that allows us to sell.
Come around and let me show you what they did, and I'd be very willing to show you enough.
I'm sure, basically, what you said, that we would've got a C of O. Maybe that one's not C of O.
Yeah, everything's been checked by the town zoning officer. Every, all of your, right, Steve, your installations are all checked by the, by the zoning officer?
When you step on the stuff...
He's saying yes.
Right, that's underneath links this way, and if you step on that stuff, then for a couple of hours...
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Somebody's gonna break their neck.
Okay, we have, we have, we have one more question.
What is your timeline to, to get these meetings accomplished? Are you hoping by the end of this year to have this project approved?
It probably will go through the planning board before the end of the year, and then they said it would take them about a year to, to actually implement it.
And does it just have to move through the town?
I can't hear. Excuse me.
Just the town planning board or the county planning board also?
The county planning board already approved it. It's now in the town planning board's hands.
Does any part of this have to go through the Genesee Economic Development for approval for any incentives or anything like that?
That would be up to finance. I would know that.
Finance question, that would be up to them.
That would happen after, if, if the project was approved, then?
We generally don't look for any, we generally don't look for any public money for these types of projects, so.
Say that again?
I'm sorry. We generally do not look for any type of, uh, public money for these types of projects.
So, as far as the town making a decision, it'd be by the end of the year, you think?
I, I would say it would probably be in October.
And what does the town have to profit? Are you going to get higher taxes? What is the, what is gonna be good for the town to say, "Yes, we want these put in"? Just curiosity.
So, the town planning board has an obligation to review the project that's presented to us, make sure it conforms to zoning, make sure it meets our comprehensive plan, and then make sure it's, um, it's built, you know, per the, per the plans in the town. So, we'll review the site plan, make sure it's in conformance with, uh, you know, all the, all the zoning requirements. Make sure it's in conformance with all the standards, you know, D E C, stormwater standards, fire department, ingress, egress. All that'll be reviewed by us during the site plan review. We mentioned the state environmental quality review that we do. That's a checklist. I don't know if anybody's said it on those meetings, but it's a, a ten or eleven-page checklist. We go through all the impacts the project would have on the community aesthetics, you know, environmental impacts.
I understand all that.
So, we'll do those reviews. The town doesn't necessarily benefit. We, we just have an obligation to review the project that's presented to us, you know, as a developer. It's his property. We just need to make sure it conforms with the town, town code and, you know, our, our town plans.
And whether they can sell all these beautiful mobile homes.
Okay, Steve, you've got one, one last question?
This is kinda off-base. It's toward Jeff or Katie. When you guys took over, you initiated a half a million-dollar liability bond. It's about thirty-five dollars a year. Can you explain the purpose of that or how, how it protects you?
Sure. So, we get that question all the time. It's a good question.
Well, we got a group, and I figured...
Yeah, no, it's a great, it's a great question, and like I said, a lot of our residents ask it often. So, since we own the land, we have, we have liability. So, we, I like to use the example of, say, you have a contractor coming to fix your roof. If that contractor falls off the roof, hurts, hurts, kills himself, they're probably gonna sue you, and they're also gonna sue us, 'cause we own the land. We don't have any responsibility for that contractor. It's all on, on the homeowner who hired them, so your insurance will protect us in that situation. Another good example was about the dogs. If you have a dog, you, you also need to have homeowners or renters insurance. So, again, that would, 'cause we, you know, we, we can control the dogs to a certain extent. But again, if, if you have a dog and a dog bites another resident or causes some type of issue, your homeowners insurance would, again, protect us against that liability.
Okay, to go along with his question, now, my insurance company will not go over more than three hundred thousand, because they say the age of the trailer, and they're not gonna go any higher. They could go elsewhere, but it'd take them a long time to find someone else to come up with that extra to get five hundred thousand.
It's hard to ride an older trailer. It is.
Sure. Well, yeah. I mean, you also, you also can just get liability without, without fire insurance, but, I mean, the fire insurance should be relatively inexpensive to cover in case you do have a fire. If you call into the office, talk to our insurance guy, I'm sure we can work something out, you know?
Can I ask one more question?
Yes, one more.
Is there a public hearing that, that last year, we had the meeting at the Fire Hall? Many of Stringham Drive came. Was that considered a public hearing?
Yes.
And do you have any more public hearings coming up, or is that the one and only?
Well, that, that was the only one we felt we needed. We could have another one if we felt we needed it, but I think everything that could possibly come up has come up.
So, you're at the decision stage?
We're at the, we're at the, at the decision stage.
I think the review stage.
Yeah, the review stage.
Always, always the review stage.
And once you decide, it doesn't have to go before a town board. You make the decision.
We make the decision. Yeah. If we felt that we needed another hearing, we could have as many hearings as we want, but this we did particularly for the park residents, because they weren't included in the public hearing the last time.
Yeah, from our standpoint, once we do the review and the approvals, then they can get their, their permits and all of that stuff, and they still have to build by the code and all that kind of stuff, so they really... And our, our town code enforcement does go by the book, so it's not a good question.
Wait, we, we can't, we can't hear.
If there were residents that wanted a public hearing, could they request that? Would they contact you and say, "Could we have one more public hearing"?
You gotta be in my majority, or else nobody will listen to you.
I don't know. It's up to us. We want to...
We, we could consider another, a public hearing if we find a need. It depends on, you know, if the plans change. Certainly, our agenda's posted on the town's website. You're all welcome to attend. You're not, not really able to, you know, contribute, but at least you could...
Well, they can speak. We have that new...
Oh, yeah, in the beginning, you could speak on agenda.
There's five minutes set aside at every one of our meetings.
So, you can at least hear what we're talking about here, what, you know, what stage we're at, what decisions are being made, kinda review the final plan. This is not the final plan. There'll be more added to that. Like I said, we have to look at fire department, ingress, egress, you know, upgrades possibly to the existing road, since it is going through an existing park. We're gonna make sure it's all up to code, since there will be seventy-six residents or, you know, units in the back that will have to use those roads.
Thank you.
The thing we're all concerned about having a meeting, only to get updated information, is you get the information to pass it on to us, whether or not Katie can pass it through emails or however, letters. We just wanna see, we'd like to hear updated, what's going on.
A monthly form.
That's, the one question I didn't have that wasn't really answered was, you're gonna have three entrances to get into this thing. I did make a suggestion...
Part of our review, all of our meetings are public.
Yes.
You're welcome to attend them, and I encourage you to.
Let's do it.
So, all the information that comes to us is disseminated during our meetings, and we talk about it. There's nothing that's held secret or anything like that.
No, no, this is your secret. So, you get, keep us updated.
But I encourage all of you to attend.
Or you can, you can watch it afterwards.
Kind of a cool learning experience, and, you know, we're, we're bound by rules, so, you know, we, we want your input, no question, but we also have to, to look at what the project is, what, if it's in the, if it's in the code and all of these things, so, you know, again, I, I think our interest is in our, our community's interest, you know?
We're, we're looking for transparency and communication. We're looking for transparency and communication.
Yeah, that's why we record the meetings.
They're gonna get it from the town, but maybe not from Congress.
Well, planning board needs to refer to the day of the month. Our agenda's posted on the town's website Friday before the, you know, the meeting, so you can go on the town's website. You can look at the agenda items. We don't know what the schedule is for submittal. It depends on, you know, where they're at with their, their engineering backup and, and plans to middle. But certainly, once it's on our agenda, it will be on the town's website that Friday before our meeting. And when he says the first and third, there's some times that we cancel a meeting, 'cause there's no agenda items, so don't just automatically show up at the town hall. Make sure there's an agenda. It'll be posted on, it'll be posted on town's website.
It's typically seven o'clock as well, on the first meeting.
Did you see at the town hall, you said?
Yeah.
The town halls are our typical meeting, yes.
And, and if you have a question on anything on the agenda, you will have a few minutes to speak.
The concern again would be an access road to Holly Road. I talked to Greg Post, not even more than a week ago. He said down on Holly Road, at one point, they wanna get a ninety-four apartment complex built on land that the county owns, that they own. It's not private land, in which case, meaning that there may be county land to make this supposed access road to Holly Road. So, some of the traffic from this new development, the people living there can use Holly Road, too.
The only way there's gonna be a road connection to Holly's would be on Stringham Drive, would have to be extended. There's been discussion on it, but...
Probably won't be.
But that's the only way, because there's a farm in between there that's not involved with this project and won't be. It would, it would have to be in, I think, in the mass plan that did show Stringham Drive, that's going on. I'm not a hundred percent on that, but that makes sense to do it.
We were talking, I was talking about transparency, and Greg Post set up ESOS and, um, charts that told you what the project was, how much it's gonna cost, and, and what the progress was. And he went around to every voting and polling place, and if you were gonna do your civic duty and vote, you would see where those projects are. They were all set up. They called the county board of elections, and that's what they did last year, to, to inform the public. If you didn't see them, that means you didn't vote, and you really don't care. I'm just, I'm just saying, you guys are doing quite a job.
And, and I believe that we, we try, that's what this meeting was all about. We're trying to make it as accessible to the, to the people as possible, and I hope that you feel comfortable about this. And if, if you think that you need to talk to your park managers more, get a little group together and sit down with them, have coffee with them.
For some reason, you can't get ahold of me here, Shannon. You can reach me through, through our...
Jeff, I think I have your personal cell phone that I was giving to when you took over, but I've called a couple of times. I'm like, "I don't got you."
Thank you very much for having us in and listening to us. We all appreciate you very much for doing this to us.
Well, thank you for coming. This was very, this was very important to the planning board, and we're very happy that you all showed up, and I hope everyone felt that they had their chance to speak. Is everyone happy? Well, pretty happy.
We'll be happy when we see action.
I wanna know, I wanna know what you said about the power being upgraded. When does someone in the town come in and look at the power lines and run our...